Nobody could hear me at the last meeting.
Oh, okay. I don't want to hear me, so.
We had the audio people come out and they tested it and they're going to be on tonight listening, make sure everything is working properly.
It was so weird, the PC meeting, you mean?
Yes.
I know.
Just before that, we had DDA and we had none of those issues. I don't know.
That's because I'm here.
Go away, go again.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, you were talking and one time you were so loud, I had to turn my.
I know, I don't want to hurt your ears, but like, people want to hear what I have to say.
Hi.
You'll find out.
We'll banter back and forth.
All right.
You too.
Well, you wanted to?
Well, why not?
Why not?
It feels like it's a good night for it.
Be just like the.
The old days?
Yeah.
Throwing stuff.
Big friends.
Cheers.
Are we expecting anybody to be absent? Are we expecting anybody to be absent from the board?
From where?
From the board.
I don't think so.
Hey, council.
Not that I know of.
Anybody?
I see Pam so far.
Anybody call in?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Looking for my glasses.
Darla. Mike and Bill LaRose, DPW, whoever. Pam. Donna Clark.
I am here.
We didn't tell.
Hi, Pam.
How are you?
I'm good.
We think.
I had the Hoover Dam up earlier for my US history class and I decided that might not be the best background for tonight.
What a snow pile.
Clint said, well, you could leave it and then say to everybody, so I've got an idea for Cedar Creek. And then see what people say.
They're all lagoons.
No. Why'd she didn't spend it?
We're doing a Solon business.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like we're still missing Lisa and Molly.
Okay. We have a forum.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we're missing Molly and Lisa.
Can we give it a few more minutes, I think? Wait till the clerk gives me the nod.
Whenever you're ready.
I know, she's like, time's a ticking.
Where's Mr. Womack? Is he up?
Yep, he's there.
Marty. What's he doing wrestling that computer?
Big fat hand. Better things, Marty.
So proud of everyone that has learned how to use this and take advantage of it. It's a good thing.
Some officers are way too old school.
Someday I'll feel the same way.
Pencil and talk face to face.
I know, right?
I don't have to anymore. Mr. Womack, are we ready?
It would appear that we do have a quorum. So I guess we're ready to go whenever you guys are.
Okay, thank you.
Mic check, mic check, check.
All the regular meeting of the city of Cedar Springs to order for February 11th, 2021, if you would all rise with me and recite the pledge if you're able.
Of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending this evening. Next one will be roll call. Then Mrs. Atchison.
I did speak with her earlier. I thought she was going to be here, but maybe I misheard the message.
Maybe she'll log in a little bit later. Mrs. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
We hear anything from Mrs. Nixon?
I've just texted her and I will call her here in a minute.
Okay, we can log her in if she makes it. Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Race.
Here.
The thralls here. Let us know when Ms. Atchison or Ms. Nixon do log in. Moving on to item three, public comment. Council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment, public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council's policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communication with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Mr. Womack.
Thank you. So I just spoke with Ms. Nixon. She'll be joining us here shortly. I don't believe we have anybody in the council chamber tonight.
No, we don't, but I see there is a, Mrs. Clark has her.
I believe Miss Clark is attempting to hide her face, which means she does not want to comment. Is that correct?
I would like to speak on behalf of Jonathan Bergsma on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, we'll let you go right after Ms. Clark, okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Well, I just have a short list of things. First of all, I want to wish Carrie Rodwell a happy 50th birthday today. I was able to go in and sing to her and, and dance around and get a great picture of her. So I think I passed it on to Mr. Womack and Darla and to her. It's epic, so you'll have to pass that around. I even sent it to Judy Reed at the post, but I don't know where she's going to put it. But she just. And that's what, that's what Carrie is. She's cute, fun, and very, has such a, she always makes me laugh. So I'm celebrating her today and I'm celebrating our DPW who has done a wonderful job helping out and helping around the town. Getting, you know, this, with their big bucket and their plow, you know, just like scooping up all this extra snow, which is incredible. Just keeping things safe around the library and our city manager did come down to help shovel out on Saturday. I just want to give him a, a thank you for that and, um, you know, just everybody that, I love living in a, in a small community and where people care about each other and help each other and show up. You know, and all that caring and I'm really excited too, Marty, for the fire station. It's absolutely beautiful. It's a great asset to our community and I'm really proud of it. And I'm real excited that in May, we may be able to have a ribbon cutting and the library can get, along with all our whole town. And it's, it's, it's very exciting. And I'm excited about our summer concerts that are coming up. I see the, the, the city manager and the different ones, especially David Wrangler, who has lots of contacts. There's a lot of action going around pulling that together and I'm excited about that. The library is planning its summer reading program. It's Tales and Tales, T-A-I-L-S and T-A-L-E-S. And we've got a roster of performers for this summer. We're still doing it virtually as much as we know, some things outside. So we'll be getting with the city manager and making some, get some days for some of the things that we have planned. And, um, I've been working with the community building development team. They're coming up with a plaque to put on the amphitheater. Uh, this just being grateful for all the people, the artisans and all the people who put their heads together and built that amazing asset to our community. I'm also celebrating that the Cedar Springs Library is doing well. For at least 15 years, I've been tracking everyone around us, how much we check out from them and how much they check out from us. And in January, we checked out, we, we checked out 307 items from KDL and they checked out 1,584 from us. Back in the day, that used to be the other way around, that there would be more of us checking out from them. But through, through COVID, we've been open more and we've been just, I'm really happy about that because it, it says that we're, we're relevant. And, um, and just, you know, checking out, we had 3,661 items checked out and Sparta had 1,130. Grant had 1,473 and Carson City had 1,454. So it just kind of gives you a comparison of our, with us, with our neighbors, we're doing very well through this time. And I love to work at the library as like a happy bubble. It's just a happy place. People come in and, you know, they're using the computers and they're, they're getting things to read and, and chatting and being, it's like Bob's Barber Shop.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
So anyway, come to our happy place.
Thank you. Mr. Womack, anyone else?
I believe Mr. Kyle Wilson indicated he'd like to speak. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of City Impact. We have a, it's on the agenda, a group, it's called a group missions trip. It's coming to Cedar Springs in June, the 28th through the 3rd. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, but if you're able to, check out group missions, groupmissiontrips.com, it'll explain the whole situation. What they do is the local mission strip, they come into a community and it's nationwide, this group. They pick a small community, they come in and they do projects on houses. So it includes siding, install, repair, deck repair, interior, exterior painting, yard cleanup, wheelchair ramps. And they do this through a selection process. The community fills out applications. There's criteria you have to meet to get that, but they're, they fill out applications, we review it, they, they are going to try and get to 60 houses in the community, which is huge for Cedar Springs. We, we really want, I mean, Cedar Springs has been a huge partner with, with City Impact and we, we love this community so much. The, everything on, for this mission strip is free to the homeowner. It's all paid for through donations and we partner with, um, Big Box, so like Lowe's and Home Depot with national contracts to get prices like donated materials and prices lowered for the community so we can get, come in there. We would, we partner with, um, we're working with, to come, to come alongside or have the sheriff's department come alongside as far as any, um, any DPW. We're going to try and work with different dumpster companies to come and help just for a week to just come in and help the community if they want to purge, just to get rid of stuff, that kind of stuff. So it's, it's really a good community involvement situation. What they do is typically in a non-COVID situation, they would come in and each evening, they would, they're going to be housed at the school. And each evening, they like to make it a celebration in the community. So we get donations from like a local Meyer store for, we do like an ice cream party. Well, we're going to contact, you know, the fire department and see if there's anything we can do at the time, depending on the COVID restrictions. If we can like, you know, bring the fire truck out and spray water, I mean, stuff like that. We, we try to make it a big community event and, um, it's, I'm, I'm super excited for it. It's, it's, it's going to be great for the community. It'll get everyone involved and get, get the life, lifeblood going again. Hopefully after this COVID thing's going on, it's, you know, everyone I know, I'm sure wants to get out and get about, but they have a lot of, they have their own COVID plan. So everyone's going to be safe within the, the areas they have on the website, how they're going to meet and interactions and stuff like that. So it's, it's a application process and if you, if you know of someone in the community that would benefit from this, we have applications at the City Impact Building. So any questions and stuff like that can go into City Impact. I'm trying to think. The, the, the mission strip is a 501(c)(3) out of Colorado. And like I said before, they go throughout the entire nation and they pick small communities, typically 10 a year. And they, they do this, which is fantastic. So that was all I wanted to say. I appreciate everyone's support for City Impact. I know we love our community and we continue to reach out and love on people. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask him a question?
Go ahead.
Um, is there anything, like, is there a specific fund that people in the city could donate money to, to help support, like, getting food or getting additional supplies beyond? What you got is that, is there a, like, could people, you know, say, I'm going to give $10 to City Impact towards this city mission?
Yes, very much so. You can do two, one of two ways. You can give to City Impact and we make sure that that, that dives right back into that. Or you can also give to the group, um, the group missions trip. We will make sure that anything donated towards that will, will go back into the community towards that mission.
So if people who are watching this right now on Zoom or who will be watching this later on YouTube, wanted to give money, they would like make a check payable to City Impact for, and like notated city mission project?
Make sure it's labeled mission, group mission trip.
Group mission trip.
Correct.
Okay.
And that will go into the fund and we will use that towards whatever we need to do for the, for the evening, whether we cover the cost of, like I was talking about, um, materials for, materials for the homes.
I can see all kinds of things that you may need the money for.
Very much so.
That's why I wanted to say, how would we, so we would give it to City Impact, like here in Cedar Springs, to group, city, say it again, city group mission.
Group, group mission trips.
Group mission trips. And that will be for here in Cedar Springs.
That is correct. That will be in, in Cedar Springs, correct.
Wonderful. And I'm assuming Cedar Springs is the greater Cedar Springs area. Is it not?
Yes, yep. So the mission strip will actually cover, cover, um, I think it's going to cover like down to like the border of Rockford. It's going to cover like the outskirts of Cedar Springs, but most of the action is going to be within Cedar Springs because we want to keep it as close as we can.
But, um, so if people are out in Solon Township or if they're, they're.
Correct.
Giving, again, when we're looking at supporting.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. You'll give us more information at a later date on this, I hope.
Yes, yep. We'll, we'll stay in contact with city council and, and, and the city in general about this event that's coming up.
Great, thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Hall, I would indicate that both Ms. Nixon and Ms. Atchison are present with us.
Yes, I have noted that on the attendance.
Good. Mr. Hall, I believe Bryn Powell is with us. Would Ms. Powell like to make a public comment? I can't hear her, but she seems.
Okay.
Okay.
Here I am. Brynette Powell, 21 East Maple Street, Bob's Old Barber Shop. I wanted to promote, first of all, the Women's Club and the Cedar Springs Lions Club are doing a fundraiser. We're doing kettle corn pickup bags Saturday from eight to two here at Bob's Barber Shop. Order if you'd like ahead of time with Janice Hill, 616-862-8456. One of our COVID fun, fundraising projects for the Cedar Springs Women's Club Scholarship Fund. I do want to address a couple of things on the, well, actually one thing on the, or a couple of things. Red Flannel Agreement and Discussions, please keep that touchstone in our community and I love to see it on the Water Tower. Another thing is I see on the discussion items is this marijuana ordinance, 100-foot separation versus limited retailer licenses. I've expressed in the last several meetings in regards to this setback, it is setting restrictions on the limited number of buildings available in downtown Cedar Springs that we do want to see refurbished. And marijuana can bring that money into this town. I do have a client that has been writing a letter to the Planning Commission and City Council. I don't see it on the packet, but it is from the Hawks Nest, Kelly Rice. I've asked her several times to send it and it should be in these, under communications. I don't know why it's not getting there. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you, City Council and Public Works. Thank you.
I have Stephen McKeller. Would Stephen McKeller like to make a public comment?
Mr. Womack, I'm actually here for the, the fire inspection portion of your city council. I can address, I can make some comment now if you'd like about that.
No, so we normally allow people to comment on their particular items, but you are still a member of the public. So.
Okay.
We'll, uh, we'll address that at the time if that's okay.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Matt Andrus, would Mr. Andrus like to make a public comment at this time?
Hi, Mike. I do not.
Okay, I believe that's all the members of the public that are on Zoom right now. Mr. Hall?
Okay, thank you. No other further public comments at this time? Moving on to item four, public hearing. I see, do we, we don't have any, correct?
No, we do not.
Thank you. And moving on to item five, adoption of the agenda. We have any additions or subtractions? Or changes?
No, I don't believe so.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. They're moved and seconded to approve, adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison, I see you're here. I don't see her now.
She's nodding.
Thank you. We don't see her. Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yeah.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries, adoption of the agenda. We got to item six, consent agenda. Any concerns or issues or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the number F, the motion to approve ordinance 226, to the action agenda, I mean, the discussion. And we could approve it at that. If we needed to. I just need a little more clarity on how that works.
Anyone else? Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as change.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We vote on it, or make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
And support was Ms. Atchison? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. To approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on to action items. 7A, Mr. Womack.
So we put this on your agenda because we obviously like council to attend these things. So it would be a nice opportunity for everybody to take a look at their calendars and let us know if that date and time works. If not, we'll have to discuss for a minute when another date might work. Ms. Falcon, do you have any input about what days would be better than others if the state doesn't work? I, I guess maybe we could, for the time being, see, does, does council have any problems with that date? Will we have a majority of council there?
Is that a Thursday?
Thursday?
Yes.
I can do that.
Ms. Atchison, can you make it then? I'll ask.
Was that March 18th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
I should be able to. I'll put it in my.
It's a Thursday.
Ms. Conley, can you make that date and time?
Yes, I can do that.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon, are you good with that date and time?
I, I may be a little late depending on how the workday goes at six o'clock, but I can make the.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
And I can be here too. So right now it stands, Mrs. Nixon may, will be possibly a little late, so that date sounds good.
What time was that? Again, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Okay, I, yeah, I might have a problem. I'll let you know for sure.
Okay.
I just looked at my schedule. Yeah.
We can get the information to you. If you have any concerns or questions of those folks that cannot make the budget workshop, please get with Mrs. Falcon and I'm sure she will clarify anything for you. Okay?
Ms. Johnson, do you want a formal motion to that effect or is that?
That was my next question.
It's not necessary. If you'd like to make a formal motion, the administrator can set that meeting, but the council may make a motion to officially memorialize that.
I'd make that motion. Now we have a budget workshop on March 18th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion we've had? Everyone can make it if possible. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, sign no. Motion carries. Item B, Mr. Womack. I believe we have someone in the audience will help us speak to this.
We do. So Mr. McKeller, I appreciate you being here. Mr. McKeller is a firefighter with Plainfield Township Fire Department. And he's been working with myself and the administrator over in Plainfield Township and of course, Mr. Fraser, to come up with the agreement and some kind of the plans that we have moving forward for what we want to accomplish here. And of course, I've had multiple conversations with council members regarding this. I, I would like to take a more, maybe aggressive is not the right word, but a more impactful review process in regards to fire inspection and fire safety, especially with new builds that we have coming into the community. I just don't think we've taken as good a look at some of these new developments as maybe we could. And so to accomplish that, we need to have a certified fire inspector. We certainly, unfortunately, don't have anybody on our staff that is qualified for that. Thankfully, Plainfield does and Plainfield is willing to help us out. So we've had a city attorney draft up this agreement. It's a pretty basic agreement because I think a lot of this is going to really be operational between the, the staff, between Plainfield Township and the city. I've always found Plainfield Township to be very easy to work with and we got good folks down there. So in addition to that, soon, probably at the next meeting, I'll have the fire code in the city updated to the most recent edition, which is 28 edition, 2018 edition. And so, Mr. Keller, thank you for your time. He's here to kind of answer any questions council might have. And if he's willing, maybe walk us through just a little bit of the process that can help, uh, as fire safety. Mr. Keller?
Thank.
There you go.
Yep. Yeah, thank you for the, the opportunity to talk to council. Fire inspection, fire prevention, that's one of the best proactive tools that the fire department can have. best proactive tools that the fire department can have, that merit that the fire chief can have as his at his, is one of his tools in his toolbox. We're able to a new commercial construction, which we're starting out with working together on. Basically, we'll, we'll look at the, the site plan on the paper form and make sure that we have access around the building, all the way around the building for fire trucks, proper widths of access drives, turning radiuses, no dead ends, longer than this, what the code will allow. The amount of fire hydrants needed to put out a fire if it's if that building would happen to catch on fire. Down to simple things like making sure dumpster location has the proper distance away from, from buildings. On new construction. Also with new construction, if it's a large enough building, we'd also look at the if it requires fires, fire suppression systems, we will offer that service too and look at the look at it from on the print all the way with, with a visitor to while it's being installed to actually witnessing the, the pressure testing of the system to make sure it operates. And then at the end, at final inspection, we'd also walk through to make sure all the sprinkler heads are not obstructed. And, and I did, I did hear earlier in, in the meeting here, you're looking at doing maybe some rehab work or remodeling work down into the city and we can help with that too, to make sure if the, if it's a large enough project, we should get involved to make sure that everything is brought up to the current code that is adopted. We work hand in hand with the building official. I know that the, the building official is contracted out by the city and we would make contact with them to, to work together as close as we can. But like I said, the fire inspection, fire prevention tool is what is a very proactive tool that protects your, your tax base and, and the lives of your visitors and citizens of, of the, of the city up there.
I have a question. Well, if you have this inspection done on a, like a refurb or a new build, will that help your insurance rate to be better than maybe it wouldn't have been otherwise?
It, it could if, if, if that inspection gets forwarded off to the inspect, insurance company. There could be some, some reductions or, or benefits of it. Certainly in the newer bill, newer buildings with, that require sprinkler systems and, and installed right. Yes, it does have a, have a good benefit for the cost of insurance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No one else?
Well, I guess I have one more. So let's say a nonprofit organization like a church or the community impact does a refurb on somebody's house. Who would actually pay for that inspection? The person that did the refurb, the person that owns the building or the group, or would that be a donation?
If it's a, on a residential structure, the, we're not, we're not part of that inspection process. It's for the commercial structures. And I believe the, it would fall onto the contractor that, that permanent fee.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder, everyone, this is commercial property currently that we'd be rehabbing or anything, any of the downtown businesses or new commercial construction. Our new fire station, for instance.
Well, if somebody was going to refurb a, a building, could they have your, your, you come in and then say, this is what you need and what you don't need before they actually do the work on it?
Do the print.
Yeah, I would review the print and, and tell them what, what, if the print is correct regarding the fire code, the building official would give his blessing or tell them what they need on the structural part of his code.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? It's the will of the council.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two twenty-seven and ordinance to amend chapter thirty-eight, article two, section thirty-eight dash ninety definitions.
Powell?
Yes. I'm sorry. Okay, I gotta get my glasses on. Okay, motion to approve the Fire Inspection Services Agreement with Plainfield Township Fire Code Update to I F C twenty eighteen edition C M memo.
Now, we're just doing the motion to approve the Fire Services Agreement with Plainfield Township.
Okay, I made that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions or concerns? Hearing none. Have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. The motion carries. Moving on to item C, Mr. Womack.
Keller, thank you. We appreciate your time and I'm sure we'll be in contact next week sometime.
Yes, you're welcome.
We have a motion on the floor to approve this.
Oh, okay, if you want to go that way.
Is there support? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. The adoption of item C. Any discussions, questions, concerns?
So as council will recall, this is the water and sewer audit, automatic adjustment ordinance that we discussed last month. It's basically to help prevent the possibility of having a rubber band effect in our rates which occurred oh, back in twenty fifteen. You know, you're, you're gonna see a very small one or two percent rate increase every year versus twenty-five percent every two or three years. So I think it's a smart thing and it will help, help prevent stuff like that from happening.
Yes, it's a we deal with this every couple of years and basically in the discussion, water tower painting, that's one of the reasons we need to do a rate adjustment periodically. So any other questions of Mr. Womack's or anyone on this item? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
It's all votes yes. Motion carries. Did you want to move item F to this action item discussion, Mrs. Powell?
Um, well, we've had one discussion on it. I guess we could use this on action items. I just wanted to have another discussion about it because it's gonna be an important issue for our community.
What's your will?
Um, let's put it on action items.
All right. Action items will move item eight from the consent agenda to action items. Motion to approve ordinance two, two six and ordinance to amend chapter one, section one dash fourteen. Mr. Womack, you want to speak to this?
Be item D?
I believe this will be seven D, correct?
Yes.
Um, so I, I agree with Ms. Powell. This is obviously an important thing. You know, we here at City Hall really, really desperately try never to write tickets. We don't have to. You know, we give out multiple warnings and requests and cajoling and letters and please, please, please. We don't like writing tickets. We really don't. But unfortunately, the current fines, I believe, are from nineteen eighty-something.
Yeah.
I, I think I put it in your, your notes there somewhere, but I mean, this is just, this is outdated. It's old. And so I did a review of the local communities to see what they did. And this new proposal would be more in line with what all the other communities around us are doing. So, sorry, I was scrolling down. I forgot that we had moved this item. So I'm stupid in that way. Yeah, so I mean.
Stupid.
I, in, in that way. So, I, I really, I just see this as bringing us up to modern times. This is not going to be any more punitive than Howard City or Sparta or Rockford or Greenville. And we really try not to. I think this year we've written maybe seven or eight tickets for snow removal and that's it. It just, we don't do it very often. So I'm happy for any questions you guys might have.
Do you get like adverse response from folks when you ask them to shovel their sidewalks or?
No, yeah, we do unfortunately. And, and the, the snow on the sidewalks is one of those very strange issues that you would never think it to be a hot topic. But there are very strong voices on both sides of that spectrum. We have a number of people who really, really think we should give tickets to everybody in the five minutes after it stops snowing. And there's lots of people who don't want to shove their sidewalks or more likely, you know, this community didn't enforce all of its laws for a long time, I think. And so now here we are ten years later saying, well, now we're enforcing this law. So I can understand why maybe if they haven't done it for the last ten years, they feel put upon to be required to do it now. I get that, but you know, shoving your sidewalks is many things, but the most important one is it's a safety issue. And I, you know, and I know the council agrees with me, safety issues are not things we take lightly here in the community. So, yeah, we, we've sent out, I think, ninety warnings, thirty second warnings and seven, I think, seven tickets so far for the snow removal issue. But we almost never write tickets to private citizens either. Tickets are almost always written to businesses or landlords. So this is just not an issue that the average citizen is gonna see much of. And they get multiple opportunities and warnings to fix the problem long before we even consider writing a ticket.
So when you write a ticket and they say, well, I'm just not gonna pay it, what is the process after that?
Well, usually the warnings are when they say they're not gonna do the whatever. They're not gonna cut the grass, they're not gonna remove the snow, whatever. Once they get a ticket, it's no longer telling the city they're not gonna do it. That's when they start telling a judge in court that they're not gonna do it.
Okay.
So, you know, they'll get a ticket, they will then get a summons from the court. The court will then give them a date where they can present their case to the judge. And the judge will then make a decision about whether they are responsible for whatever it is they were ticketed for.
Might note that when we do the court system, it does cost us money. So that's why tickets aren't written very readily.
Right. Can.
Compliance is what we're after.
Yeah, especially on the sidewalks.
We've had a lot of snow this winter, so it's come to a point of some sidewalks not being shoveled. So this is why we're discussing this today. This also covers long grass and junk and rubbish and other things.
Dogs bark and then.
Yes. Daily blight. So.
We've never written a ticket for a dark, a barking dog.
Any other questions or concerns? What's the will of the council?
Needs to be done. It's been way too long. People need to follow the rules.
Is that a motion?
Yep. I'll make it a motion. I can go back here. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance two twenty-six as written in the action items. I can say it that way.
Yep.
Support.
Second.
Atchison, I believe seconded that. Any further discussion?
One, one comment is when it goes into the court and it is heard by judicial, judicial, whatever level it is. This is more for the people that may happen to be listening. The money doesn't come back to the city.
Right.
They, they consume the majority of it.
Okay.
Depending on the penalty that is issued. You may get a pittance. But not much of it comes back. It is a cost, as the mayor said, and then the city manager. It's, it's not, you're not doing it to generate money for the city.
Right.
That's not the purpose.
Okay.
Just to get the job done.
Well, thank you, Jerry, because I do think there'll probably be people in here howling about us trying to get rich off of it.
I know from other circumstances, that's exactly what they think. So.
Yeah, yeah.
You would, you would be experienced in that. Thank you for your comment.
Yes, thank you, Jerry.
Any other questions or concerns? Have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. I believe we move on to eight discussion items. Mr. Womack?
So, A would be social districts. We discussed this briefly at the last meeting. And council seemed to have some questions and concerns about it. So I did try to address some of those. I also provided some additional information about a different social district. So last time you saw Rockford's, now you're seeing Cadillac's. There've been a couple dozen cities in the state that have taken advantage of this law. Most of them are doing it for the winter restrictions. What I would be proposing is we do it more for summertime, primarily centered around the amphitheater and the upcoming summer concert series. So I did have a couple of businesses in town that indicated they wanted to come and talk with council today about this and that they supported it. I, I just unfortunately don't see those people. So I'll give it a go. So primarily what I'm asking is that the council create a social district that would line the sidewalks on Main Street from the Legion north to Maple Street and then along Maple Street down to the heart of Cedar Springs. So I, I know Ms. Powell was concerned about the Elm Street area. After talking with people, I don't think that's viable anymore. So really what we're doing is we're trying to funnel people down to the heart of Cedar Springs. So that the businesses in town that serve alcohol through a liquor control commission license would be able to sell drinks to carry down to the amphitheater. And then citizens could then drink that beer or I presume a glass of wine while watching music in the park. So the district would be created, but then we would only allow it on certain dates. So this would not be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week type thing. What I propose is that it would be tied to a community event application, which the city does plan and still submitting to the city council regarding the summer concert series. If council wanted to then maybe allow it for some other community event, I guess they'd have the authority to do so that way. But I just think, A, it would be good for our businesses. I think there's a number of restaurants that are really suffering right now. And I think the citizens are really gonna go, oh, let's say spring break this year when it comes to being able to get out from underneath the COVID restrictions. I think once we got our vaccinations in place, this is gonna be a lot safer to socialize and outdoors. It's gonna be a great place to do it. And I think the summer concert series is gonna be well attended. So it's something I'd like to address further. It's something I'd like to put together a plan on. But I don't want to do it unless I think council's willing to consider it and pass it. So I'd like to hear from council any specific concerns that we want to hear addressed, anything that they specifically think needs to be changed or, or put into it or other information you might need before you feel more comfortable about doing it. or put into it, or other information you might, uh, need before you feel more comfortable about doing it. So, I'm, I'm all ears.
I have a question. On, on this event, how would we determine which event would be allowed to do this and which event would not be allowed to do it? Once we allow it once, we're pretty much stuck for everybody, correct?
Sure, i- i- and you're, you're absolutely correct, I'm sure that, uh, every single, you know, group would then thereafter say, well, I sure would like to take advantage of, you know, drinking alcohol in the park. Um, and so I guess it comes down to a couple of things, council could say, well, yes, anybody can. You know, the rules were written, uh, so that you could have a, a drink in the park. It doesn't say you can get completely trashed, it doesn't say you can go do keg stands in the park. It says you can get a sixteen ounce drink, you have to get it from an established restaurant. Those established restaurants will not over-serve you if you appear to be drank, uh, drunk. And they will be counting the number of drinks that each person buys. So there's not gonna be somebody who's gonna have twenty drinks. Uh, we'd also probably have to have a rule on books that says, well, you can't have a cooler in the park anymore. Uh, at least not during these events, because we don't want people bringing in a twenty-four pack of beer of their own. Uh, this is supposed to be supporting the businesses, so if they're not buying it from one of the businesses, you know, it kind of violates the spirit of why this is being permitted.
I have another question for Mister, for Sergeant.
Say, I have a concern about that, but go ahead and I'll, I'll wait on mine.
I have a question for Sergeant Probst, is this kind of problematic for your folks to enforce? I don't know if he's available.
Well, I'm trying to be available. I, I really don't see any issues with it. I, I think, uh, Mr. Womack has the rules in place. I don't see, foresee any problems enforcing it.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Hall, before Ms. Conley gets, uh, talking, one thing I would propose is that at least for the first couple of concerts, if that's what we're talking about, uh, that we probably wanna have at least one additional officer on hand, uh, which would of course cost the city money, but it's probably worth it, uh, to kind of set the mood. I agree, I, I think there's a possibility that people might wanna let loose a little too much and that drunkenness might be a problem. And so I'd like to have officers on hand, uh, that could help kind of set the mood that this is a family-friendly event. And that alcohol is something to add to the occasion, but not be the occasion. But I'm hoping that people will respect it, and if they don't, then we will stop holding the events. That's the simple answer. Ms. Conley, did you want, have a question you wanted to ask for a comment?
Yeah, do you, Lisa, do you wanna go first and I can, I can circle back?
Sure, if that's okay.
Sure.
What would be the difference, um, having that social district? And maybe having, and I don't even know if it's feasible, having the restaurants come with a tent or something to the event? Is there not enough room for that, or is that not allowed with their, with their alcohol license, or?
Yeah, that's the problem, so the Liquor Control Commission doesn't allow them to serve off-site. Which is why what we'd be essentially doing is saying, you can buy your beer at the Legion. And then walk that beer down Main Street, down Maple, to the park, and then socialize at the park for the concert.
Okay.
Yeah, now, something I will say though, is one of the things that, uh, Mr. Ringler from the brewery is working on with his Cedar Blitz, uh, event that he's gonna try to do in May, is, uh, something he's referring to as a Taste of Cedar Springs. So instead of, uh, these restaurants serving alcohol in the park, what they're gonna propose to do is if they serve food in the park. You know, everybody likes the idea of a food truck, but food trucks are not local. And so if we can get our local restaurants to go out and serve food at the park, then they make food, they get profit, our, our local citizens might be able to try something new that they wouldn't otherwise have tried. Uh, I think it's a great idea, I'd like to see that happen. But because of the Liquor Control Commission rules, this is really the only effective way to allow, uh, the service of alcohol in the park.
Okay, thank you.
So, on the coolers and people being able to have coolers, isn't part of the social district of law say that alcohol being served has to be in specifically, designated containers that are like labeled with the business that sold them and isn't that all a piece of it?
Correct, so.
So, I would not be really comfortable in then saying, okay, those of you who brought your kids with your picnic now can't have that. Because these other people wanna bring their beer from another business, like I'm, I'm supportive of having the soc- the social district and allowing that, but I wouldn't wanna then restrict what other people could bring. You know, as, as a mom of a thirteen-year-old, I would wanna be able to bring my juice boxes and my sandwiches and whatever it is that we're bringing without like, being told now I can't have that.
So, I understand exactly what you're talking about, um, the, I shouldn't say that's a hard and fast rule. Obviously, the whole point is we don't want somebody bringing a, uh, twenty-four pack of Pabst.
Right.
That then start drinking that beer instead of a beer that they get at the, uh, the brewery or the Legion. Um, and of course, we also wanna limit the amount of alcohol being consumed, because again, it should be a fun thing, it shouldn't be, that's what the event's. So if you can come up with a better idea to prevent somebody from bringing outside alcohol in, I'm all ears, but that seemed to be the easiest and most effective way to do it.
Well, I feel like we're, we're back at, you can't have alcohol in the park, other than this specific, if you buy it from these specific people on these specific days. In these specific containers, and so if we see you, if the police see you, which again would be why you'd have the additional police presence with a can of Budweiser, you're gonna get ticketed or asked to remove it. If they're putting it in a different container, so it won't look like that, well, I think you're already gonna have that issue unless you're gonna say nobody can have anything to drink in a container, unless it's labeled from one of these businesses as alcohol, which I don't think you wanna do. I mean, am I wrong?
No, you are completely correct, it is entirely possible for somebody to grab a Coca-Cola in a Coca-Cola bottle and then put half a fifth of Jack Daniels in it.
Right, and people could do that right now.
Sure.
I mean, there's, there's nothing stopping them from doing that right now.
And not that I wanna get ahead of myself, but, you know, there are these things called edibles, uh, I hear they make people act funny. So it's entirely possible for somebody to go grab one of those and eat that instead of drinking alcohol too, yes, I get it.
So I don't, I mean, I feel like that's trying to solve a, a problem that isn't part of this. So unless you're gonna start saying that people can't eat and drink in the park, I don't know why the restriction, because we implement a social district.
Well, and again, Ms. Conley, the, the cooler thing was just an idea. Um, and of course, we'd eventually bring a full, uh, plethora of, uh, the actual plan that you guys could nix any ideas you do or don't want.
I'm just saying, that's my concern, I mean, as a mom that's attended, you know, kids' birthday parties in the park with like cakes and ice cream and drinks and soda, and, and I understand that might not be at the same time as a concert, but I could also see a whole group of families deciding they're gonna do something like that. And I don't think we want to restrict them from doing that. And then while we would simultaneously say, you know, the adults can go get a beer at the brewery if they wanna bring it over, while the kids are eating, um, ice cream and cake and, you know, whatever else you brought in your cooler. So, I mean, I guess that's my concern, especially if what we're trying to do is make this a family event. What it is, is the really restricted piece of the alcohol should be, there can only be alcohol that's in these containers that are labeled in this way. And then if other people are trying to get around it, well, that's sorta on them. I mean, I think it's gonna be hard to have people getting ridiculously drunk with a bottle of Coke that's half whiskey and Coke that's being secretly hidden.
I, I think the point was that when you have your twenty-four pack of Pabst in a cooler, that you can, uh, empty that into your already labeled beer. So you can drink that eight times without purchasing another one from one of the restaurants.
Mr. Womax, if someone gets falling down drunk, then they could be cited, correct? I think Mr., uh, Probst would answer that, Sergeant. If there's a person that's obviously impaired and drunk, he could be cited and removed as drunken disorderly, am I right, Mr. Probst?
Yes, that would be definitely handled that way.
Thank you. So there's a lot of what ifs here yet, so.
Well, and, uh, of course, I get the cooler issue, um, is there, are, are there other issues that anyone on council has that might need to be addressed before we pursue this?
I have just. Is if, if I go to the Legion and I wanna Miller Lite and then I gotta walk down to the park, so what I'm gonna probably do is get like two or three, take it down to the park, I'm gonna be walking down Main Street with three bottles, two or three bottles of beer, that's gonna, you know, just be. Yes, my call, but I don't know how that's gonna roll, but.
Well, I think that there was, I sat in that meeting, um, that they had. And, um, I believe that the restaurants that would like to be, take part in this, if this goes through, is they would have a cup with their logo on it, sticker, whatever it is. And there's a limit to how many they'll be able to have, I think it was two. And that's it.
Yeah, and then you're gonna have to walk back if you want more.
Right.
Or, yes.
Exactly.
Drink one up.
I actually kind of appreciate the limiting on that. Like, I mean, you, you are gonna have to walk back to go get another one. And in that process, it's gonna be kinda hard to get ridiculously stupid drunk. I mean, just saying.
Well, and, and again, so if you're at the Legion and you have your beer that you're drinking, and then you wanna go listen to the music, so you take a beer down to the music, the music lasts two hours, then you're probably gonna go back to the Legion and have another drink. I don't know if too many people are gonna see the concert as the place to get drunk. Besides the fact that these restaurants, they don't want the liability of over-serving people, they don't want people getting drunk. So they're not gonna serve you seven drinks. And I suspect, one of the things we're gonna wanna do is not only limit the amount of drinks that can, can be sold to one person, but probably require that they take their names and phone numbers similar to the current COVID restrictions. Not only would that help restaurants from not over-serving, but it would also help us in any situation where we have a COVID outbreak.
It also probably could limit the, um, like going from restaurant to restaurant to restaurant. Like a, a bar hopping kind of thing. Which, I mean, on some level, they could do some, but, I mean, having been a bartender, I was a bartender when I was in college, the, watching the person, some people can be pretty intoxicated and when they walk in, and you might not, I mean, if you're not really, especially if you're busy, might be harder to tell, and so, yeah, that might be, is that a thing we can do as part of it?
The current COVID restrictions, if you go to a restaurant, I believe they're supposed to take main man phone number. So I don't see why we couldn't require that as part of our social district. Anyone else? Cause of course tonight, it, you know, I, I wanna hear what your concerns are, cause I can't address them if I don't know what they are. Um, I just received a text message from Mr. Ringler and he says, you know, please let them know I support it. I, I think it could be a good thing for the community, I'd like to get to a point where we at least have a plan in place. We could hold one or two of these concerts, see how they work out. If they're a problem, if we have drunkenness, if we have fights, we won't do it. If it's great for the businesses, we got lots of people downtown and everybody's happy, I think we did the right thing at that point. So, at the very least, um, I'd like to start putting one together. And then we'll have a more, uh, in-place plan, we can maybe pick it apart a little bit more. But I'm not seeing any councilperson who's just die, you know, uh, died in the wall against this. So, are there any other concerns I can address before I start writing?
Will the, um, city pay for the police patrol, or will the group that's serving the alcohol pay for the police patrol?
So, the reason I'm trying to tie this to the concerts in the park is because that's where I have funding right now. Because we didn't hold the concerts in the park last year, I've got DVA money and city council money from last year, then we're rolling to next year. On top of that, I've got a good, uh, donor who's gonna put five thousand dollars towards these concerts. And I've got a couple other smaller donors, we're thinking about one or two thousand bucks each. Uh, right now, I'm probably looking at ten to twelve thousand dollars, that's not a ton of money, but for eight to ten concerts, um, I think we can do it. Now, um, Sergeant Probst and I were talking about the cost of deputies this year, of course, everything goes up in cost every year. But I think to have one additional deputy is gonna be about two hundred bucks. So if we have one additional deputy for the first two or three concerts, plus we could have one of our, uh, local guys stand by nearby. Um, I think that should be able to keep things under control. And of course, the restaurants would only be able to serve alcohol between, say, six PM and maybe eight thirty PM, similar to the, what they do at sports games. And, uh, yeah, I think there's a lot of ways we can restrict it and prevent there from being problems. If, if that addresses your concerns.
Yeah, I would say if, uh, put together this plan you have, and, uh, if anybody has any concerns, we'll review it. And then next month, we can debate it again.
If, if I could make one comment.
Yes, Mr.
I'm kinda waiting. I'm not totally against it, I'm just against it, the fact that there may be some people that don't want to go to things where alcohol is being consumed.
Right.
Is there considerations for consumption areas and non-consumption areas? And I know it's kind of segregation, but, uh, you may have two or three families sitting next to someone who is consuming. And that may offend them. If you could take a look at some way, or you could kind of work out a situation like that, I would appreciate it.
I agree, there should be a
Me too.
Drinking area and a non-drinking area for the folks that don't wish to be around alcohol. Designated area, let's say.
I would be on board with the, a designated area as well. My, my initial objection to this is that there are some folks who would not appreciate drinking in public in, in any sense, and I was trying to be sensitive to them, but perhaps if we, if we have a, a family area, so to speak, uh, that, that may be better. As far as the, uh, the cooler issue, I, I think that we're going to have to leave the coolers alone for now and see if it becomes a problem, right now we're what-if-ing and, and trying to extrapolate what might happen, we don't even know if it's a problem yet.
I think the coolers can be like on the honor system for now, the police, if there becomes an issue, they'll, they'll check it. All right. We'll get back, Mr. Womax will get us some more information on this, any other questions on item A? Moving on to, MB, water tower spherical utility service contract, I can speak to this pretty much. We entered into the agreement, I think just before I retired from the DPW and basically it was the only way we would be able to get our water tower painted at a reasonable fee and extend the life of that asset and, uh, get an inspection and all the above, and we just improved that rate increase and hopefully we would need to move ahead with this. Mr. Womax, did you wanna speak to it?
Yep, so, um, this was requested by one of the council members that it go on the agenda. I was originally and now, uh, I, I see that I was wrong, I thought we had another. I I see that I was wrong, I thought we had another four or five years before this had to be renewed. Um so I'm thankful that this was brought to my attention. Uh so uh I, you know, I had a busy week, I didn't get a chance to really address this with staff, we'll probably talk about this on Monday, about how and when we want to either renew this contract or what we wanna do moving forward. Um but I suspect um that one of the issues that's gonna come up at some point is what's gonna be painted on the outside of that water tower. So currently there is Cedar Springs uh on one side, and then I believe Red Flannel on the other side. So uh at least in a brief review of that contract, it looked like uh maybe the uh service company was willing to do one painting for free, and then a second painting for an additional cost. So if that's the case, uh we'd probably want the city, um the name of the city or something city related uh to be the freebie, and then if any other group or the Red Flannels wanted to pay for the additional painting, uh that's probably what we'd want to allow at that point, so I don't know.
I looked at the contract, I was the only one, I'm the only one who was still on council now, that was on council then. Cause I really thought um that was, and it was two city managers ago. I really thought the second one was free, but I, obviously it says it's not, so when I go through the contract, so I don't know, I would need to like, I I feel like then maybe the Red Flannel Festival paid for it. I'm trying, is that how it worked?
Yes, uh Michelle Andrews uh stepped up to that.
Michelle Tracy, yes, okay, that sounds right. And I thought it's like, I don't know, like seven hundred dollars or something for the the second one when I looked at the contract, cause I was like, oh, okay, I I see that now, so.
There was also a big discussion on the red paint fading, and uh they went with the red instead of the black versus black, and the festival did pay for that.
And it it's held up quite well, I know that was one of the concerns, that it would really fade, and it's, I mean, as I was looking, this is like year eleven and it looks pretty good.
Well, so I guess the point, though, at this stage is um we're gonna have to look into it, see what it takes, and uh I guess we'll be in contact with the Red Flannel Group uh and any other interested parties who might wanna have uh their name or their symbol up there, and then we'll have to see what things are gonna cost. Um I certainly don't have any problems, if the council doesn't, allowing Red Flannel Festival to put their symbols up there, I just don't think it's appropriate for the city to pay for it.
I think, Mister Womack, go ahead, I think you have to go ahead and get our contract laid into place, what it's gonna cost us for a new, and what it's gonna take to replace what's there. And then uh we'll have numbers, we can approach the festival and see if they're willing, what they wanna do with theirs.
Okay, sounds fair to me, thank you.
Everybody agree?
I agree.
Oh, we're, okay, at least then we'll know where we're going.
I think we shouldn't tie ourselves down to one group. We should lay it out there, see if there's any other group that might want to. I don't know, I don't believe there probably will be, but we don't wanna have it, we're relying ourselves to one group.
When we had that painted, the school was approached also, and they declined because the cost, and uh they were in dispute with Iowa on the Red Hawks at that time, there was issues and they and and then the festival stepped up.
And of course, uh Mister Hall, as you're aware, we'll probably need a second water tower at some point in the next couple of years.
Yes.
And the likely location for that would probably be on school property.
Yes.
So they they might be interested at that time.
That's where the primary location would be, and Eagles been after us to do that and another well.
Now, there is a new uh mural that's in downtown, it's got a big rubber ducky on it, I sure'd like to see a big rubber ducky up there.
No.
Dear. I'll second that.
No, moving on, any other discussions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, in the contract itself, it's a maintenance contract.
Yes.
Do they actually do out exterior cleaning?
Yes.
Besides the interior.
There's two interiors.
Okay.
The inner bulb, that has to be drained and inspected every two to three years, and that's when you see the pressure relief valves on. And then once it's drained and washed out and inspected, any repairs necessary, it's filled, and it has to step for forty-eight hours with chlorine and to disinfect before it's brought back into service. When that tank is out of service, that means there's no water for fire production. So, and then they do pressure wash the outside and the the pedestal, they call it. There's also a room in there that they take care of, there's control switches and stuff in there.
And that's exterior.
Interior in the base, in this, in the base.
What about the exterior? So I look at it every single day, and it's like.
Pressure wash it?
White stains.
It's very dirty, so it's.
That's why it'll be.
White is a beautiful color, but you gotta keep it clean, you know.
Unfortunately, we have a lot of uh contaminants and pollutants in the air, and it does stick to white.
Yeah.
So we do get it, and they do pressure wash outside before they paint it, it's probably due for the painting, and the painting has a pathetic protection, and it it's more of a corrosion resistance than it is for looks. Uh prolong the steel, that has pathetic protection in it too, which is.
Mister LaRose, if you're here with us, do you have any comments on this item?
Yeah, he's climbed it.
I think I remember, oh, go ahead.
I do, Mike, um. As far as the service agreement, it's almost a must, I mean, they come in, they take care of it, just like Jerry said.
We don't have people.
You need to afford it, um as far as this tower being dirty, um I went back in the contract, there is nothing about pressure washing, I did talk to him about it to see if it could be pressure washed underneath the bowl.
Yeah.
And uh, cost is pretty outrageous to do it, um. It it can be done, and I started to look into it and then got off on something else, uh at some point I'll look into it and see.
You could do it.
Yeah, see, see what it is. So um and then it's uh it's probably due for a painting here in the next uh two to five years, I'm guessing. It's one of those real nice contracts where they just kinda let you know what's up, when it needs to be drained, and it's a great thing, it's a great way to take care of it, and that way you always have it in place to take care of it.
I think that would be just um an idea to maybe think, uh see if there can be another cleaning in between this. How long is it? Ten years?
Ten years, yeah.
In between, just, just at least look into it.
Into adding it, like on the next one?
See what they do, correct.
Ask them to see if they could clean it like once every three or every five or something on the outside.
Yeah.
I'll get with them, I'll get with them and get a price, it may be something, it it might not be all that expensive, we may be just be able to handle it on our own outside the contract itself. Um we'll we'll look into it, see what it costs, and I'm sure to come back to you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. We'll get more information on that, item C, Mister Womack, and.
Uh so this was also requested by a councilperson that'd be put on the agenda. Uh we had to do some root round, trying to find an actual signed copy, I'd never seen one myself. Um so uh thank you, Ms. Johnson, for finding that for us. Um so I'm not entirely sure why uh the request was put on the agenda. Um I'll make no um light of the fact that I'd love to rewrite certain portions of this agreement. Um you know, like I spout every day, I I support the festival, we want this festival to survive, and we want the festival to thrive. Uh I just don't know if this agreement was written uh entirely in the city's favor. So I'd like to take the opportunity to rewrite certain portions of it and uh bring it back to council and the board of the Red Flannel Festival Board at some point. Um but I guess I'd like to hear what the board has to say.
It was written in haste, um I'm sure there's a couple of members on the council still here. We went through quite a bit of anxiety on this with a lot of ink pens being thrown.
Yes, oh my goodness, yes.
You know, I I I agree, it it's time to take a look at this thing, uh our costs are kinda spiraling out of control, I think, for the festival. Uh I would like to see them bring us a uh some type of a plan on what they predict their costs will be, so, you know, and then we give a limit on how much the city will contribute. That's my two cents.
Can we create a subcommittee again to uh go back and forth?
Yeah, before we get going too far in this, I would put a subcommittee together to, like the first contract was put together, uh three councilpersons and whoever the festival gets to come and sit down and hammer out some type of an agreement that both can live with.
Cherry, I mean. La- I was just gonna say, last time we also used um the city attorney and the Red Flannel Festival attorney, so I don't know at what point you wanna bring those in.
Well, I think we, we have enough bodies here, and I would say, uh Mrs. Nixon, would you like to be on that committee?
Uh well, well, first you you may wanna hear what I'm about to say before you decide that you wanna put me in charge. Um.
All input good.
I wholly disagree with the assessment that this contract is outdated or ineffective. I understand that many people feel that the money we spend on the cultural event that is the Red Flannel Festival is wasted. However, it is very much deeply part of this community, and I think that of all the random events that we've thrown some money at, this is the one that means the most for this community, and I think it's important that it stay whole and intact.
That was another reason why I would request you to lead this, since how you did it last time.
I I would be willing to do that, but I just wanted to go in full disclosure that I think it's appropriate that the city assist in maintaining this cultural event.
I agree.
Ms. Nixon, I I think you'll be not shocked by the changes I would offer on this. Um you know, and and of course, my old joke is you get two attorneys in a room, you're gonna have three different opinions. Um there's just a few things I'd like to see rewritten. Uh there's a, there's one thing in particular that every time I read the agreement just boils my blood, cause it's an illegal thing. You just, you can't put it into a contract, but for some reason found it way into this contract. Um so little things I'd like to change now. Uh the city and the festival normally sit down about March time to start planning for the next October's festival. Um I'd like to, if I have the time, uh maybe just put together a little, a quick bullet point list of a few of the things I'd like to see changed. Um and of course, uh Ms. Nixon, any councilperson, you guys are more than welcome to come to this meeting in March, and we can at least talk about those ideas at that meeting. This is not gonna be a cultural revolution, this is not gonna be an utter, you know, laying waste to the agreement. Uh it's simply just a couple minor changes I'd like to see made.
And I think Molly, it was you and I, I have to go look at the contract, it was you and I, and was it Dan Clark?
Yes.
Yes. Mister Womack, um I believe there's a clause in the contract that before we can discuss anything of a change or modification, we must notify.
So within the contract itself, I I I don't know if there's an actual thing that says we have to tell them we wanna talk about it. I think there's something in there that says if we're going to uh nullify it, we have to give them six months' advance notice.
Well, if we're gonna modify it, that's the same, isn't it? A contract is a contract.
I mean, look, at at the end of the day, if both parties agree to it, I don't see it as a problem.
I I think as a courtesy, I think we should first notify the festival that we're looking at that, so they're not blindsided.
Sure.
Mister.
No, of course.
Mister Andrews from the Red Flannel Festival is on the Zoom, and I talked to them earlier, and they are ready, willing, and able to do anything that the uh city is ready to do, prepare, to prepare for the festival this year.
Was Mister Andrew.
That would be uh Michelle's son, Matt.
So, okay, so we, you know, basically, I think the first step would be to to Mister Womack, make your drafts, and Mrs. Nixon, get with Mister Womack and look it over, and then I guess present it to Mister Andrews, and we can go from there, but as a courtesy, I wanna make sure the festival is aware that we wanna make some changes and no drastics.
Is, is.
Mister Mayor, I would just say that um if you're looking to have a committee, I am willing to be on that committee also, again with Ms. Nixon, and being that we were the ones who came up with that language previously.
Sure, I appreciate that, I was thinking right now, keep it at a minimum. At one councilperson, Mrs. Nixon was was a key information.
I thought you said you wanted three.
Well, and and once we come down to this, and then we'll get Mister Womack, and then we'll get their chief officer, one from the festival, that way we can get a lot more done and a whole lot less input.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussions before we move on to item C? Hearing none, Mister Womack, Pine Street Driveway.
So this might be a moot point at this uh stage, but this was an issue that the planning commission was uh dealing with. So there is a section of Pine Street that is east of Main Street at the light that's in front of the Wesco. It goes into North Park.
Yes.
Uh on our map, it appears to be a road, it appears to be a sixty-six foot right of way that is paved and maintained by the city. Uh in a recent development, we have, it's immediately north of Pine Street there, um there's a building that is within thirty feet of the that road frontage, and there is fencing that is within thirty feet of that road front. Under our zoning ordinance, if a building or fencing is within thirty feet of a road frontage, it is considered non-conforming and should be removed. So we're not gonna ask them to remove the building, uh but there is fencing that is located in the thirty-foot right of way. Now, at the last meeting, it was my understanding that there was a strong feeling of the city, uh Planning Commission, that they would impose that requirement, uh kinda taking it upon themselves to declare that Pine Street was a roadway instead of a driveway. So I did tell the applicant that I would bring it to the city council for their opinion, uh whether a council wants to call it a street or a driveway, that's the basic gist of what would occur. Now, as council's aware, it is very wet to the east of there, the road right of way ends in that park, so it's never gonna be a through fare there. Um but uh that's kind of the gist of it, I guess, I'll leave it to council if you guys wanna do something about it.
Yeah, we do have a water main easement through there, there's a twelve-inch water main that runs down through that utility easement, and it's the paved road, is that not on our Act fifty-one? Money, street.
You know, I honestly, I didn't get a chance to look that up. Um I I guess, Mister LaRose, do you know off the top of your head if that's uh part of our Act fifty-one uh road frontage or road work?
I do not, Mike, I'd have to look at the map tomorrow and let you know.
So I guess for the time being, we're operating under the assumption that it is the Pine Street, um and so it is a road, so that they do have to have the thirty-foot setback. Um so I guess I would ask if council wants to overturn that and declare it to be a driveway only for North Park.
A driveway only, but would we, would the city still be able to have access to the North Park and behind, will we have the right of way for that?
So that would still be our driveway.
Okay, alright.
It's the city's right of way.
Okay.
It just changes the setbacks on things.
Okay.
Okay.
We have driveways to lots of places, right? I mean, we have a driveway in Morley Park, we have a driveway in, uh, at the library that are still city property.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Rose.
If, uh, I believe if we were to take that out of a city street and put it in the driveway, there's a resolution form that has to be passed under the Act fifty-one.
Yes.
There comes in the book. So that would be something that would, uh, probably have to be considered in this.
Yes, I'm sure there is. And then there would be revenue deducted from your Act fifty-one money. Because it'd be no, considered a street.
Yep. So now it would, we lose a miniscule amount of funding from Act fifty-one, but the only benefit of doing this is to the business. There's no real benefit to the city for doing this.
Okay, what's the will of the council?
Is one question?
Sure, Mr. Gross.
Is that fencing something it'd be, could be considered legal non-conforming?
Uh, it probably is considered legal non-conforming at this point.
Um, wouldn't be critical to have the fence moved, right?
Except for the fact that we're not talking about an existing business. We're talking about a new business coming in under a site plan. So under a site plan, the city planning commission handles the authority to require them to update.
Okay, I wasn't thinking about the fact that it was a new business, so.
Well, it not only, uh, benefits the new business, but there's, um, two apartments that have access to that driveway. So you know, it's, it's a fairly important driveway to more than just one of those buildings.
We wouldn't plow it anymore, would we, Mr. LaRose? We maintain it right now?
We do, um, we maintain it and it's, it's our access to maintain North Park. We do, uh, somewhat plow North Park, not too extreme, but enough that people can get in and out back in there.
If we revert this to a driveway, does that change any of that issues?
Well, I think it would, um, depending on if it's a city driveway or not. Um, I mean, it would, one instance would be, yes, we plow our wellhouses. That's a driveway, not a road for us to have access. The, if that was a driveway, there would be no reason for us to plow it. North Park doesn't really do anything in the winter time. Um, I, I would say we're not getting Act fifty-one money off it. We would have no reason to maintain it anymore.
Yeah, don't you dump snow in the winter there?
No.
No, we used to, but not since the park got paved. Now it all goes out to the former lagoon site.
Okay.
All goes out there.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Ashton.
You said that you still had to have access there?
Yeah, we would still want access to North Park. Um, we have to be able to maintain it as long as the city owns it. So we use that road for mowers or anything else we're doing in there. And, uh, I mean, unless the city was going to vacate North Park, but I don't, I don't see that ever happening.
And we, uh,
people do use that for a walkway. Um, I've seen people go over the bridge that's there and come out that way to Wesco or whatever, or uh, people out of the trailer park use it quite often to go to Wesco or anyplace north of town.
Now, again, just to be clear, we're not talking about like vacating, uh, this and letting it revert to some private entity. The city's going to maintain ownership over it, whether it's a road or driveway. Really what's going on here is we've got a building that is within ten feet of a city street. And under the zoning rules, it should have been thirty feet from that street. So if that building were to burn down and that is a Pine Street instead of a driveway, uh, that building would then have to be rebuilt at least thirty feet away from Pine Street as it currently exists. Um, so that's kind of the main driver why this question's coming to city council. I, I don't really see any good benefits to the city to doing that. Um, it may cost this developer a little bit more money, uh, in the short run. Um, but I think it's, I think it's probably wise to leave it as a street, maintain it the way it's currently being maintained.
This is Conley, you're talking.
The Act fifty-one money to me, and I understand it's not a huge amount, but I don't understand why we would give up our Act fifty-one money that we use to maintain roads to, when we are going to have to still maintain it
Never.
to benefit a business. Like, that doesn't make sense to me.
What's, okay, what's the will of the council? What do we want to do with this? We've debated it quite a bit.
I, I would like to, um, make sure that it's a city driveway, that we have the right of way. And if we do have a city driveway and we do have the right of way, we have to at least have to plow it out for the folks that live in that area and use it.
Yeah. I'm going to advocate it needs to be a road.
Oh, I'm hearing very little support, only one, Mrs. Powell. Leave it as a Pine Street. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what, yes, that's what I say.
Mrs. Nixon. Leave it as Pine Street.
Leave it as a road.
Thank you.
Leave it as a road.
Mr. Gross.
Leave it as a road.
Okay, Mr. Womax, let's leave it as it is.
Thank you. I'll re, uh, report that to the planning commission.
It wasn't a motion, was it?
No.
Okay. Moving on then to item E.
We wouldn't need a motion to keep something what it is, right?
Well, the manager requested.
A discussion, but like, we're, we're not actually changing anything.
Yeah, we're moving on to item E now. Mr. Womax.
So, uh, the, the city council's been reviewing this ordinance regarding a hundred-foot separation requirements for marijuana businesses. Uh, I believe you guys asked for input from the planning commission. Uh, they discussed it for a little while and then somebody brought up the idea of, well, why don't we just limit the number of licenses for retailers? So I, I sat down the other day and I put together a list. Um, unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me. But we have something like thirteen marijuana businesses that are currently, uh, planning on coming to town. Of those thirteen, eight of them are retailers. Um, I understand that retailers are kind of like the sexy business to get into with the marijuana businesses. Um, and it's the one that everybody wants to do. So maybe if we were to limit the number of retailer licenses, we wouldn't then have to limit any other business. Um, of course, you could also do both of these. You could do both hundred-foot separations and limit the number of retail, retailer licenses. So I just thought it was an interesting idea that the planning commission came up with. And I guess I would like to hear from council whether that's something they'd like to, uh, consider pursuing.
Mr. Yeah, on this. No matter what we do.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Womax, I actually asked about this when we were starting as a possibility. And I was under the impression you were saying that if we limited the number, then we had to come up with some kind of a raffle or something legally to make that that like viable. Is that true? Is that not true? Did the law change?
No, so it was never a legal requirement. Um, and you're a hundred percent correct. At the time when we were discussing these ordinances, I was against that, but let me tell you why. So again, back then, um, the only experience that anybody in the state of Michigan had was with medical marijuana. And, uh, it was still very a hush, hush, quiet type of thing. And so a lot of cities were doing, you know, we'll let two or three medical marijuana places and that's it. And since they knew they were limiting the number of licenses, they'd have fifty or sixty licenses or, uh, marijuana businesses lined up the, out the front door, wanting to get one of those two or three licenses. Well, I don't know if, uh, you know, just we're now two years later or because we didn't put any limits on licenses or because there's dozens of other cities in the state of Michigan, they're now allowing this. Uh, we haven't quite seen that level of crazy, which is what I expected. Uh, so I was wrong in that. Um, but, you know, we're a town of thirty-five hundred. Um, I've had a lot of people who've approached me and said, we don't need eight retail stores. We don't need ten retail stores. We need twelve retail stores. Um, so I had that list of thirteen marijuana businesses that wanted to be here. And that was two days ago. And I've had now two more marijuana businesses approach me in two days. So, I, I mean, look, th- there's good arguments on both sides of whether we should have unlimited number of licenses. Let everybody open it wherever they want, uh, according to the zoning ordinance. Uh, but I just thought it was an interesting idea that, you know, planning commission is now saying, you know what? Maybe we've reached our limit. Maybe we need to, uh, kind of tie things down and say, you know, this is the number of retailers we'll allow in town. And we don't have eight, uh, safety compliance facilities knocking down the door. Um, and of course, another option might be, uh, similar to the moratorium that council currently has in place. Uh, you guys could simply have a moratorium for, say, a year. And say, you know what, let's deal with these first eight or however many actually open. And a year from now, we'll just open it back up, no limitations. That way we'd at least have some businesses open so we could see how things are going. Um, and I, I think one of the issues we have right now is you drive down Main Street and you don't know that there are marijuana businesses coming. Uh, I know, you guys know, planning commission knows. Uh, but the public and the other marijuana businesses don't know that. And so if you are a prospective marijuana business and you drive through town, you think, wow, I'm going to be the first one in the door. So now you and the other fifteen people who all want to open marijuana businesses, don't realize there's going to be that much competition. So, a, a couple of options for you guys to consider. Um, I'd like to hear what council might want to do.
On this, too, you know, no matter what we do, if we do the hundred foot or we do restricted, there's somebody's not going to be happy. So, you know, either way we go, we're going to upset people. Depending who you are and what your business is or whatever, we're going to upset some people one way or another. Um, we beat this thing so much. First, we went, how many licenses? We didn't know. When we decided maybe four, maybe two. Then we opened it up because not knowing we'd see what the market brought. So that's kind of where we're at right now, folks. We kind of need, uh, what are we going to do?
If we throw out the hundred-foot separation and go to the limited retailers, then we got to write a whole new ordinance. It'll take a couple of months going on. One of the things I've heard about the, um, marijuana businesses that are looking, once they find out they have a special land use and all of the, um, special uses and zoning ordinances we have, they just disappear. Cause what they want to do is come in and rehab a junky old building, make a lot of money for a couple of years and leave.
Exactly.
So I think our special land use will shut off a lot of the people that say, oh, we want to come to Cedar Springs. But, you know, we're going to have to work on this some more, apparently.
What do we do? Do we restrict it to a hundred feet or do we restrict the numbers? That's kind of where we're at right now.
In my, in my opinion, if I may. And I agree with Rose. We're going to lose a lot of these people that apply.
Yep.
We're also going to lose some very valuable, uh, businesses in town in the process of them getting it and finding out they can't make it. Are we going to get those businesses back?
No.
Are we going to have empty buildings again as we have had before? I would be more than willing to put a moratorium on this. And put a limit on the number of applications that are going to be processed to what we have right now and see where it's at.
And I agree with this.
We had talked about this to begin with. And we were kind of driven away from it.
Hindsight's twenty-twenty.
You're right. And too many is just too many. And I do hear from a lot of people. Not only from in the city, but outside of the city, saying what is Cedar Springs doing?
Yes. Mrs. Nixon, you had a comment?
I, I agree with Mr. Gross. Our aim in the hundred-foot, uh, restriction was to not have a bunch of businesses come in and not make it because most, the first year for a new business is hard. And if we're flooding the market, it's going to be harder. So, and then there are people who were not excited to have marijuana businesses come to town. And what none of us, I think, want is our downtown to be marijuana businesses and rentals. That was not our aim. Our aim was to allow them to come in because the voters said they, that was something they supported overall. And then it would bring additional business to the businesses that are here. But to be Marijuana Town, USA, and that's all our main street is, was none of our goals. Um, we're a bit into it now, you know, in hindsight. But we, we've, we've got to draw a line. I understand that, you know, a lot of these people coming in with cash, they can rehab these buildings, but then what?
You know, anyone else? What's the will of the council? Everybody's kind of had a speak.
How long is this moratorium then?
Indefinite.
And explain yourself, please.
Oh, I'm asking, Jerry was just talking about, um, do the moratorium and so was Mike. What, for, for how long?
Well, so there's two things I think we should consider, uh, before placing a moratorium. The first of which is you've got businesses who are already here, already applied, already buying land and, you know, spending money.
Right.
Um, we probably want to count those and say, that's it. Or maybe count those, add one, and that's it. Um, and then, you know, the timeframe is up to council. Um, six months is probably not inappropriate. Uh, you can always renew, uh, a mor- moratorium. You can come six months and say, you know what, things are fine, we can open it back up. I'm just afraid if you say it's a year, you know, that's gonna, you know, that's going to be a long wait for a marijuana business.
Right. And I think, though, we should take care of the ones that have already applied and are in, in the works.
Mrs. Nixon.
I would be in favor of six months, um, and then we can reevaluate.
You have, yes, go ahead. You had the original motion and last month or so to put a moratorium on, and that is still in effect. Um, we would, it's up to you on what direction we would like to go with this future. Or whomever would like to make a motion to rescind Mrs. Nixon's.
Okay, well, I would, I would like to make a motion to both rescind my original moratorium and to begin a six-month moratorium on any future marijuana applications to the city. So all the ones we have now, we would still be able to consider. They could still go through. But we need some time. The response was more than I anticipated it would be.
Okay, Mr. Womax, do you have a number of our current applications?
Uh, so would this be, would this be applications we actually have on hand? Or would this be businesses that I know are working on their applications?
Mrs. Nixon, what do you prefer?
What? So if I understood correctly, the number that are working on it or already have it in hand is thirteen, is that correct?
No, so that would be the number that I anticipate based on all my conversations. Um, would be the number we would have if all of the businesses that have either applied, received approval, or have strongly indicated they'll be here, uh, actually open. Um, I, I, I guess I could walk you guys through it right now, uh, the status.
Aren't all retail, right? The thirteen, some of them are not retail, because we're talking about retail, right?
Ms. Nixon? Because we do have a couple of grow operations that are interested in being here as well.
And grow operations would be an industrial, wouldn't they?
Correct.
Yeah.
I would, I would be in favor of cutting it off at thirteen. Uh, that's a lot. It's higher than I wanted, but in the interest of not cutting someone off at the knees, I could, I could go with thirteen.
I'm sorry, Ms. Nixon. See, and this is maybe wh- why I should have provided you guys with additional information. Thirteen would include growers, retailers and, um, processors at this point. I think eight is the number of retailers I anticipated.
So if we said something like ten? Because you were saying like the number plus one or something like that.
Down, we're, we're giving a whole bunch of ideas here. First, I guess we need to clarify, do we want to do just the six retailers? Or are we including all, which would been Mrs. Nixon is thirteen? We'll let, clarify.
Sorry, if I could interject for a second. This might be an appropriate time to send it back to the planning commission and have them provide a recommendation. And just have a moratorium on all marijuana activities between now and their next meeting, or now and your next meeting.
I would be agreeable to that.
Anybody else?
Is the planning commission scheduled to review a, a public hearing on the hundred-foot setback next, on their next meeting?
We haven't passed it.
So I don't, I don't think so. I think they, they, they sent it back to the city council for this question.
Okay.
And I guess what I would propose then at this point, if Ms. Nixon is amenable to it, is have a complete moratorium until, let's see, city council's next meeting, April, I'm sorry, March eleventh. And in the meanwhile, planning commission's on March second. So ask the, the, the planning commission for a recommendation on this specific issue about a moratorium. And then you guys can make a decision at your next meeting with all the appropriate information.
And just to clarify, when we're talking about a moratorium, we're talking about retail.
Well, right now, I would say a moratorium on all marijuana businesses.
For the next month, but the question that we're asking planning commission.
You just said.
I guess I, I would ask them for their recommendation for any moratorium. Whether it's retailer or all, or how long, or whatever.
Mr. Womax? Mr. Womax?
Yes, sir.
I think we're just kicking the can down the road here. We need to make a decision to, to move or not. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Go ahead, Ms. Nixon.
So a, a question for clarity. So when I'm talking about the moratorium, I mean for the B two, B three districts. I am not terribly concerned about grow operations out in the industrial areas. They, they aren't really public, they're not so in your face. It's not a, something that's going to draw people. I'm talking about our downtown district is, is what I'm interested in limiting because we do have some businesses downtown that I'd really like to see stay.
I agree.
I think, I see several heads bobbing here. I think this moratorium is just for the B two, B three district downtown. The marijuana establishment stores, not necessarily in the industrial or any of the other.
So to clarify then, Mr. Hall, if you're advocating, we don't send this back to planning commission, we're back to a moratorium with a number of retail for the B one and B two.
Correct.
B two, B three, sorry. So at that point then, Mike, the number we're talking about currently is eight, right?
So I'm, I'm, I'm writing down right now, I believe eight retailers would be the entire city. That includes the HC district, which has, I think, three or four. So we have Loom Cannabis, they're going to go into the old Vitali's building. We have K Kind, they're going to go into the preferred landscaping building. We have Mishiganja, which is planning on going into the old Cedar Cafe. And we have the Frame Shop, which has indicated their desire, but they have not submitted any application. So those are the ones that I'm aware of at this stage.
Four, right?
That'd be four in the B two, B three district.
That's what we need to do.
Would we stop the licenses that are already in process? Is that what we're talking about? No, we would allow those to go through.
Ms. Nixon, how about limiting retailer licenses in the B two, B three to four right now, and that's your moratorium?
I, I could. I could do with that, and then if, then we can re, we can reevaluate in six months.
Still two moratoriums? Are we rescinding the hundred?
So that would, for clarity, it would rescind the original hundred-foot setback and instead put a moratorium on licensed applications in the B two, B three district. And honestly, I think that if we're going to do that, we should do a moratorium in the HC district as well so that we don't simply drive all those businesses out to the highway.
I agree.
So that we can catch our breath and figure out what we're doing.
So what should the number in the HC be?
So currently they're at four. I would, I would propose limiting that to four.
Four in the B two, B three.
Right. It is also four in the HC currently, my understanding.
So we've got the White Pine Provisionary, they're going to be in the strip mall where the Subway restaurant is. We have Agromed, who's supposed to be where the fireworks store is. We have an unnamed business going into the Big B Coffee Strip Mall. And then we had three fifteen cannabis that was supposed to be next to the Tractor Supply, but I don't think that's going to move ahead.
Through.
So I'd say three, but possibly four.
Three with a six month? To revisit in six months, so four and three?
Sounds good to me.
We're bouncing things back and forth and back and forth here. We're, we're getting nowhere.
I think we're doing.
No, I think we're having a good discussion.
I think we're getting that.
Yeah.
Well, okay, then.
So four in the, four in the B one, B two, three in the HC, and then we're not putting a limit on the industrial for the, the other licenses, right? Or are we?
My intent was no limitation on the industrial.
Yeah, that was my feeling as well. But just clarifying that that was, that was the intent of your motion.
I'm just seeing the poor clerk here scratching her head on what we're doing.
Looks like she's going to fall asleep.
So, you know.
I think, I think that Molly hasn't figured it out.
I do too.
I do.
Support that. Six months limit.
Okay, we, we have a support now.
Can we get a repeat on the motion, please?
That was my next one was, Mrs. Nixon, could you allow our clerk?
I will, I will repeat a clean copy of that for Mrs. Johnson. So, I make a motion to repeal the initial hundred-foot setback moratorium and replace it with a moratorium on marijuana licenses more than four in the B two, B three district and three in the HC district with no limitation in the industrial zone.
For six months?
For six months, yes.
Okay. Now, Mrs. Ray supported that, she's nodding.
I support, yeah.
Seconded that. Now, does everybody understand this?
Yes, I understand it.
We, we've added and took back and forth and looked around, so is there any further discussions before I call the roll?
So this means the hundred-foot setback is gone, okay?
Gone.
Okay, hundred. Oh, this will be a roll call vote? Mrs. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes, motion carries. Ooh. We got through it.
Right.
Thank you, Molly.
Get through it.
Well, there's, there's a lot of.
Good job, everybody.
There's so many moving parts to this thing and, and we're learning as we go and so now we could learn a little more and go later, six months. Okay, any other business to be brought before the council, Mr. Womax?
Not at this time.
Okay, item nine, communications. Everyone, I'm sure has had a chance to look at that.
So the only thing I'd like to point out would be item G, the electric car charging station. So I, I am trying to work with this company. Theoretically, they would install a electric car charging station for free in a city parking lot, and we would have an agreement to that effect. We're trying to work out the details. There's a few things in their, their proposed agreement I didn't like. So I'm trying to patch it changed up, but that's the future.
I had a question on that also.
Go ahead.
On the electrical car charging station, who would be responsible to run the power to that? Because we were going to install it at the fire station, but it came in at like twenty thousand just to run the power to that charging station. I'd be curious to say, who's going to pick that up?
Yep. So there's a couple of grants that are available, I believe, from Consumers Energy. So this group would be taking full advantage of all those grant opportunities. So that's how they would get the electric to the location. And so this is virtually no cost to the city. And in fact, there is a provision within that agreement that they would pay the city a very small.
Yeah, I was going to say, we actually make a little money on it if I read it correctly.
Yeah, so it's going to be like ten, twenty, thirty bucks a month, maybe, if it's being used pretty regularly. But that's not my concern. I have a couple of concerns about the long-term requirements on the city. So I, I can't recommend it at this point, but if we're able to work out our differences, it'd be good for us. I spoke with the Rockford City Manager, they had one installed back in September, and they're happy with it so far.
Good. Moving on, then managers report. You're up.
Boy, oh, boy. It's, uh, it's been busy down here at City Hall. We've been getting a lot of stuff accomplished. We've got kind of a lot of these big projects are coming to a head now. Fire station is moving along swiftly. The West Street project is finally getting to a good point where we expect to be bid out here shortly. The finance director and the city engineer are working on the twenty twenty-one bridge project. We've got that new neighborhood, a hundred and six homes that we plan on putting up on the north end of town. Of course, Mr. LaRose and the DPW, they seem to be involved with everything we do, and they put lots of hard work into it. Lots of snow recently, it's been real cold temperatures and, you know, we're finally, it seems like beating back the COVID nineteen. So, very busy, and I'm just happy to be here. Thank you, everybody.
If we, the, the bridge closure there that go to construction, was that in August or September?
So I believe August, September would be dates that could work for us. One of the things that was going to talk with the city engineer was if we had a bid that was open-ended through next spring, would that help us with reduced bid cost? So, you know.
I mean, more, you know, with the festival coming up, that they be made well aware that, that bridge will be gone.
Sure. Well, and so in addition to that, normally these things get bid out in early January so that companies can set their yearly schedule.
I see.
Well, because, because we're bidding late, we would either want to take advantage of a fall date or if we push this into spring of next year, that'd give us a lot more flexibility with the companies. So we'll talk with Mr. DeWitt about whether that's a good idea or not.
Yeah, if we push it back in the spring, wouldn't be running in conflict with the Mill and Phil of Main Street. It would be painless to do them all at once, but it might be a lot of pain if we have the bridge out and the street out same time.
Well, the, the Mill and Phil is not supposed to occur, I think, until twenty twenty-three. So we'd have a full year in between.
It'd be next spring.
Yeah, so that could be soon. All right. Any questions of manager Womax?
Bridge might be out in the fall.
All they have to be careful.
Department of Public Works, any questions or concerns there? We had a request to repair the belt thickener at the wastewater plant was, is that become an issue or was that resolved? I see it's on.
The belt did rip. We just automatically ordered another belt. They had one in stock, so we automatically ordered another one for stock in case something else happened. When they're working on it, I happen to be out there, I noticed that all the tensioner cylinders and everything are getting pitted and leaking. It's time to replace it, and it's something we should take care of now versus waiting until later to do, so they're going to go ahead and do it.
Just for information for the, for the council members, that saves us a lot of money. It waters, we pay to have the waste all the way by the gallon, and this removes that from the sludge. Any questions to Mr. LaRose? Police Department Sergeant Probst is gone. Our fire chief, Chief Frazier.
I have nothing unless there's questions.
I have a question, Marty. Well, I have a, a comment too. I was glad to see that they maintained the arches over the doors facing Elm Street. That was your idea and that was a nice touch. And also, I was wondering if there's any chance we'll have that antique fire truck ready for the ribbon cutting for the new fire barn?
You're breaking up, Mrs. Powell, but I don't have an end date on that. Hopefully, it would be a, a real, real big feather in my hat if we had the ribbon cutting and the fire engine at the same time, and then Marty's retirement will be a couple of days later.
Oh, boy. We could drive you out on it.
Elmwood.
Jerry.
Mrs. Powell, no, I do not have a finish date. I do have a promise, but I've had quite a few of them.
Yes, yes.
Keep your fingers crossed and hopefully we can get it soon.
Well, let's work on it.
We should be able to have them.
I would think so.
Thank you. Any other questions of the fire chief? Thank you, Mr. Frazier. City clerk? We've worked her over enough tonight.
I think Baby kept her up last night.
Finance Director, Mrs. Falcon. Hopefully we'll have everyone there at your March meeting.
Yes.
I hope so.
If any of the council persons have questions or concerns on any of the accounts that we have, please be in touch with Miss Falcon. I'm, I'm absolutely sure she'd be glad to explain them to you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll be getting ready for an audit again, correct?
Uh, not for a while.
That's good.
Summer.
Code enforcement, questions or concerns? Building inspections? We're now on a board's commissions minutes. North Kent Community Center. Now we're at item eleven, council comments. Mrs. Conley?
I just thank you to the DPW folks. You moved a lot of snow in a really short amount of time and kept the water going, and thank you.
Mrs. Nixon?
Well, thank you to the rest of the council for, who bared with me while we hammered that out. It was long and drawn out, but we made it. I, I, I know that there will be some people who aren't happy with the moratorium. All I can say is, we're doing the best we can.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Atkinson?
Um, I just appreciate that we can work together. Um, and a discussion, uh, a lot of times has a lot of moving parts, but it comes together in the end a lot. And I think that, uh, like you said, we're learning as we go, so. It'll be great to see a bunch of new businesses, but we don't want to have too many. Um, thank the staff for all their work too.
You all need to learn, cause I'm gonna go.
Yeah, that's what you keep saying.
Uh, just want to remind everybody, the blood drive is Tuesday. We're getting more folks every month and, um, the versity, versity really like Cedar Springs. And if you are curious and you want to know if you had COVID. Get your blood draw, they'll test it. I found out on my blood draw that I did have COVID at some point, so. It's, it's nice to know. And also, the, the dog park is just busy, busy, busy all the time. It's just a real joy to see the people and the dogs running. It's a lot of happiness going on over there. And, um, try not to forget about the popcorn fundraiser. Popcorn fundraiser on Saturday. For the Women's Club Scholarship. Thank you, everybody, for all your work, especially you, Molly. You got, you did a good job.
Mr. Gross? Ditto to most everything.
Yeah.
Uh, appreciate everything that DPW has done and, uh, hours they've put in, I'm sure. Uh, might request just a little more sand or something, and I know because of the weather, being cold, it was difficult to. Uh, lay anything down, but main intersection was pretty slick. Uh, it would have been nice to have a little bit more, uh, grip in there, so, uh. Don't take that as a criticism, just maybe a hint, okay? Uh, I did like the idea that we could discuss this, although I think as far as the marijuana, I think maybe. Uh, we were a little later than, than we should have been, but it's better late than never. So, uh, thank you, everybody, for going through and working on it and, and we'll nail it down. Mr. Ray?
I think we have a great team. I like that everyone has their own. Um, they bring up different ideas that, you know, for people that are still new to this. Um, it really helps out. It helps think of all different aspects of, of what's going on. Um, it is something that I never thought in my life I would have to make a decision on. And, but I'm glad that I have you guys help out with this. And thank you to the city for all their hard work.
I appreciate and thank everyone on this council also, you know, there's, there's a lot of. Of discussion back and forth, whether we agree or disagree. In the end, we look at what's for the community. And that's the bottom line, the way I see it, uh. You know, I, I prod and push people here on the board like, okay, we're, we're, we're taking a lot of time. But it, it brings out a lot of good talk, good discussions. We can build a good ordinance, you know, Ron American always said, what are we trying to fix? On this ordinance, we don't know yet what we're trying to fix. But we're hearing from both sides of the community on what direction they would like to see us go. So, having said that, I thank everyone here in the city employees. They all do an excellent job. And we stand adjourned. You taking order for popcorn?